Good evening. Today is Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and welcome to the regular session of the Milford School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being broadcast and recorded by Milford TV, and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through Central Office. So, nice to see everybody tonight. Our first agenda item is the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from the regular session on November second, two thousand and twenty-three. Any discussion there? Not seen any, so looking for a motion to approve the November second, two thousand and twenty-three regular session minutes. Motion by Matt, second by Michael, and all in favor, and that will be one, two, three, four, five in favor, one abstention, and one absence right now. All right. Second agenda item will be announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Seeing if any of our committee members have anything, anybody from our administration team? Not seeing any.
Oh, you know, I'll get one.
Okay, yep, go ahead.
Two things. Tomorrow evening, the Milford High School football team will play Walpole at Bridgewater Reno High School with a trip to Gillette Stadium on the line at six P M. So, if you have the opportunity to go and root for the football team, I think it's going to be a fun and exciting game. The playoffs have been good so far across the board. Second, I want to publicly thank our family resource center team led by Annika Hill and Juliana Middleco. Our S E L team led by Lisa Kinke and Anita Amante and Toledo Ridalvo. And our E L team led by Jen Orgenian, excuse me, for their work supporting our new families placed by the state in Milford. Additionally, our administrative team, nursing staff, teachers, and assistants have all stepped up to welcome the new families into the school and the community. This is the best of Milford and why I'm really proud to be part of this community. I think everybody's really stepped forward to support the new families coming in, and the community's really stepped forward too. So, thank you to everybody who's moved into Milford.
I'm helping the microphone. That's all I have. All right. Yes?
Yeah, I just have one quick thing I wanted to say. Last time we were here, we were sitting in a fairly cold room, and I wanted to just express my sincere gratitude to Carlos Peña and also his staff and Energy Construction and Auburn for, and not just going above and beyond the fine parts. We're extremely old boilers, but for staying here and getting the heat back on by Sunday, that following day. So, just a lot of gratitude towards them for getting us up and running.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Anything else? Craig, anything on the artwork, or is that the same one that was here? It was the same one, okay.
What we can say again about Mr. Art more than...
Always great to point it out, so thank you for that. Appreciate it. So, around one more time, any other correspondence? All right. So, next agenda item is our invitation to speak. No one here for invitation to speak, so we will move on to chairperson update. Had a couple of questions on that. So, just put it on there just to give a little leeway for the chairperson to be able to give updates on meetings that may happen offline. For one, we had the meeting with FinCom last night. Not everybody was able to attend that, so again, just to give quick updates on that. The first part of that will be the Milford TV committee opening. Unfortunately, Michael had reached out to me and had to resign from this board, so we'll need to replace that board member. It does not necessarily have to be a committee member. This board typically meets once per month. I believe on the last Wednesday, is that true?
Second Wednesday.
Second. Oh, it's the second Wednesday? All right, second Wednesday. You know, if a board member, one of our board members is willing to go onto that board, again, we can post on social media that we are looking for a representative that might have some interest in that board. So, if that's the case, reach out. If you are interested, reach out to me. If you have a potential candidate, also reach out to me from there too. So, all right? No, and I'm happy to put it in an update too if there's not a committee member who's interested. So...
Mr. Chair, I think these...
Yep, that's why I just wanted to...
Sorry, I have a question for you. First one we just saw in the school committee, she has a petition for school.
Yeah, you can just have a C right in. Yeah, yeah.
One hundred percent, please.
Absolutely.
Yep, it's public. Yes, yes, you're fine. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending. You're not here for invitation to speak side then?
No, 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 no.
No, just wanted to make sure because we've gone by it and I'd give you the...
They're very exciting, so buckle up.
Yeah. So, all right. So, all said on the Milford TV board opening. So, also again, we met with FinCom last night. Myself, Superintendent McIntyre, and Facilities Director Carlos Peña were all there. We reported to the Finance Committee that our estimated boiler repair cost would be approximately fifty thousand dollars. Of course, Carlos received lots of praise for his dedication for the fixes, as Matt had just pointed out. You know, M H S, Milford Public Schools, since we did not need a temporary system which would have dramatically increased the cost, therefore, the school department, as the school department, we did not need the emergency funds at this time, and the operating budget, as Kathy had pointed out, can support this cost. So, I want to thank FinCom for their willingness to work with us with that. Again, we didn't need it, but we did make them aware of a student that has recently moved into our district. This student also has dis- an honor district placement at the tune of four hundred thousand dollars. So, this is something obviously that we didn't necessarily budget for, but we want to make the Finance Committee aware of that, that potentially in the springtime, you never know how, as our budget moves through, that we could discuss that potential offset with them. So, again, just make them aware of that. And then also, Kathy, true right, there's no circuit breaker funds available to offset that expense this fiscal year too.
We can watch it closely.
Yeah. Also during the meeting, Chris Moore discussed about us hiring a facilities maintenance person at each school. I think that's something that the Facilities Subcommittee can bring into their discussion, and we can bring it to the budgetary side of things. And then also, Dan Levine had requested that we look at installing a video surveillance system at the Turf Track Facility again, to just one of those that's protecting our investment. So, those are the things that came out of that meeting. I'm sure I'll just, I'll open up if anybody has any other questions or anything else that they want to add to that. All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to our E L A M-CAS overview and literacy programming update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to start with a slide at the request of Mr. Erickson. This is some results that we had at the state level. We were talking about chronic absenteeism and absenteeism generally last meeting as it pertained to M-CAS results. And I want to draw your attention to these boxes, the percent meeting and exceeding, because those are the way that we're reporting the results to you. And you can see the difference between, this is at the state level again, kids that are not chronically absent versus kids that are chronically absent and the difference in percentages. So, it's a huge difference when kids are in school versus kids that are chronically absent. Like I said to folks earlier, we have access to a platform that's helping us with our data and managing it called Open Architects. We're going to see it tonight with our enrollment. We're working with them to try to create a platform that's going to do this for us with all of our individual students and see if we can draw a connection between days absent and M-CAS results and really trying to get at the question of what is the, what's the number that really starts to affect M-CAS numbers? So, that's, we don't have it yet. They're working on it for us, so hopefully, at some point in the future meeting, we can have that information too. Anybody have questions about this? Yes?
So, looking at this, and I just, I will admit, I just Googled quickly how the Department of Ed classifies chronically absent students.
Yep.
And seeing that it counts any reason of absence.
Yep.
Is there any way to disagree? Because I'm wondering if you have a child with a significant disability that requires medical appointments that's causing absences, and then because of their disability, they have a lower M-CAS score as opposed to just the fact that they're absent? Is there any way that this is accounted for in the data?
No. I mean, the only way we could figure that out is if we, we'd have to go into X two and figure out excused absences versus unexcused absences. But when we report to the state, you're exactly right, as we talked about actually last time, is it doesn't matter if it's excused, not excused, you're absent, you're absent. And unfortunately, like you just said, that's one of the things that really affects students with I A Ps. And it's definitely a factor as to why kids on I A Ps, it's one of the factors, it's not the factor, but it's one of the factors why kids on I A Ps don't fare so well on M-CAS. So, I agree, but we could, I don't think it's all that easy to do.
And it's not something that, I was just curious how difficult, because I think that that's just a variable that's worth mentioning. And don't get me wrong, I, you know, kids need to be in school, but I just don't want us to think that's the only reason maybe there's these lower scores for these students. That's all.
Yep. Agreed. And, you know, like we said before, when we looked at two thousand, I think it was twenty-one data, maybe even twenty-two, I don't remember now. We were, you know, if I had COVID, everybody in this room's out of school for however long. So, that dramatically affected our, I think it was twenty-one. It was definitely twenty-one. I can't remember if we were into that in twenty-two or not. We might have been at the beginning of the year.
A little bit.
So, really, this year is the first year we haven't been doing that. So, hopefully, our absenteeism numbers improve. I don't know, but you're right on that point. All right. Let me just... Now, I'm actually going to turn it over to Carol Sversky, who will also, she's going to run through the M-CAS data with you and then talk to you about some of the programming that we have in place across the district.
All right. Craig's running my machine today for me, so I just wanted to say hello and thank you for having me on the agenda this evening. I'm excited to talk about all the exciting things that are going on in literacy. And I wanted to start by sharing our mission statement and core values that we developed for literacy as a literacy committee last year. We had representation from pre-K to twelve, E L educators, classroom teachers, and special educators to create this. So, you know, I'm not going to read it to you, but take a moment, just digest it. It took a whole year to get here, and I'm really proud of it. It really reflects what we want to see and hear when we're walking up and down the classrooms. And it's the guideposts for where we are and where we're headed.
Slide needs a little beep.
Okay, so I'm going to start out by talking about some of the M-CAS E L A results, and we'll start by looking at the aggregate results. And just to orient you to the data, we're looking at two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And just as a reminder, in two thousand and nineteen was the last year there was full-scale M-CAS before two thousand and twenty-three. In two thousand and twenty, there was no M-CAS. In two thousand and twenty-one, there was half M-CAS for three to eight, and then full M-CAS for grade ten. In two thousand and twenty-two, we started to resume back to normal. So, this shows you the aggregate results for grades three to eight and grade ten. And we see M E is meeting or exceeding expectations. And we have the state results, the urban superintendent network, and Milford. So, the urban superintendent network allows us to compare Milford to some districts that are more comparable to us. And you can see that slowly, we're making some gains back. We're certainly not where we were, but we're trending in that direction. So, this next slide looks at grade level comparisons as a whole for three to five and six to eight, as well as broken down by grade. So, this is, again, comparing Milford to the urban superintendent network and the state. And if we look at grade five, we can see there's a nice bright spot there. And this is consistent with what we've seen every year and grade ten as well. And, you know, when I think about these bright spots, I think these are some of our grade levels where we have really, we have veteran teachers and we have strong collaboration among teams. In grade five, we have, you know, four reading teachers as opposed to, you know, grade three where you have sixteen teachers. Again, we're seeing trends where we're, in many cases, above where the urban superintendent network schools are performing. And I think that's a testament to Milford's commitment to continuously, you know, meeting the needs of a diverse and growing population. So, this is when we take a look at M-CAS data by growth percentile. And to contextualize it again, if we see a growth percentile of sixty or higher, that is pretty, that's considered high growth. If we're looking at between forty and fifty-nine, that's moderate and consistently solid growth. But you can see compared to where we were in two thousand and nineteen, we've, we're again, we're making gains. We're not back yet, but consistently across the board, we are, you know, we're trending in the right direction. Grade five, again, is highlighted seventy-two percent is an exceptionally high S G P and, you know, continues to be a bright spot.
Number two in the state, actually, they did really, really well.
So, can you just, I'm sorry, I'm just not clear what this means. Can you just talk about this data point a little bit more?
Sure. So, this is when students are compared to themselves. So, they're showing that they're growing, not in comparison to other students in the state, but their own performance.
So, just by, not necessarily that their, like, qualitative descriptor changed, but just that the actual points scored increased from one year to the next? So, like, they didn't necessarily go from not meeting to meeting?
Correct. Correct. So, I guess it's a very convoluted formula they use, but the simple way to think about it is this. If you scored a five hundred in third grade, they take all the other kids that scored five hundred, and then there's a range. Some kids that scored five hundred, say they got a five sixty. They would have a growth score of, what is it, eighty maybe, or a hundred? That's, no, ninety-nine is the top, so they would have a ninety-nine. Then you could go the other way. A kid that scored, say, a four sixty, they might be at a one for growth. It's the only data that we have really to understand how that cohort of students did.
Okay.
The other data that we have doesn't, it's different cohorts of kids, right? So, you have last year's third graders, they, for example, where do we have that? Like, I don't remember now. Was it here? I guess we didn't. So, when you compare like the two thousand and nineteen data to the two thousand and twenty-one, to the two thousand and twenty-two, this group of third graders is a different group than this group of third graders, right? Where this data is comparing that same group of kids. That's what the growth, that's the part of the growth.
So, if there was no growth, would it, it would be zero if the scores were exactly the same?
No, not necessarily. So, like, a kid that scored a five sixty, which is the high score, they might score five sixty again, they'd be a ninety-nine. But they may, they may still be in exceeding, so they may score five thirty, but their growth score might end up at a twenty, right? But, but they're exceeding. Make sense? You want to go to the next one?
Sure. So, this one is the data by subgroup. And if you look at the highlighted, that's two thousand and twenty-three Milford compared to the state. We can see that there's some room for growth. And, you know, we are, we are comparable in, you know, if we look at our economically disadvantaged and Hispanic and Latino, we are ahead of the state, so...
And like we said before, it's this column really, this column here on the changes from twenty-two to twenty-three that shows that the dips that we had in COVID, which are these dips, are slowing and in some cases, coming back around. So, all points indicate that we're headed in the right direction.
Just a quick question?
Sure.
The number outside of the parentheses, is that actual individual students that are being compared?
Percentage, so...
Okay, got it. Now is it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, that is by subgroup for three to eight, and the next slide is by subgroup for grade ten. And again, if you look at the, you know, the plus or minus changes, that's really going to illustrate where we're growing and where we're still looking to make gains.
You could see at the tenth grade, for example, he spent a lot of time with E L students last year, and it shows definitely.
The writing with colors program last year was brought in to include all E L levels of language proficiency. So, it's, you can see the impact it's having. And when you think of what's at stake for the grade ten M-CAS, it's really remarkable. And I do credit a lot of that work to Eamon Cunningham and his commitment and the Veteran Department that works really collaboratively with E L teachers and special educators to support students and each other.
Ask a general question. So, this is obviously the, I'm just looking at the twenty-three, twenty-three column as an example. So, what happens to these students that aren't passing? Like, I know this is one year, so they'll retake it twice. What percent at the end of the day are going to pass, Greg?
All right, so, so it's a good question. Because they're not meeting or exceeding doesn't mean that they don't meet the competency determination.
I'm sorry, passing isn't equal to meet?
Um...
Sorry?
It is. It is. But if they, if they get, I don't remember what the exact number is. I think it's a five, four seventy or four sixty-five. Between a four sixty-five and a five hundred, they're partially meeting. But they could, but, but if we develop individualized plan for them, then they can still be considered meeting. So, that'd be option two. Option one is you hit five hundred, you're good.
Got it.
Option two is you get in between those numbers, you're still good. We developed a plan for you.
This is not a clue partially meets at all. This is just meets.
No.
That's a really helpful distinction. Sorry.
So, so the actual number of kids that are retesting is roughly, you know, thirty kids.
I think it was, I think it was around twenty this year.
Wow. Okay, that's great. Okay, because I look at this at them. Okay, so that's really helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, moving forward, we actually, we dug into this a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I have it written. So, currently, students for classes twenty-four and twenty-five, they can earn competency with a score between four fifty-five and four seventy-one and get on a E P P, which is like a support plan. And then moving forward for the classes of twenty-six to thirty, it's going to be students who are four seventy to four eighty-five will have the option two to meet the competency. And then twenty thirty-one and beyond, it's going to increase to four seventy to four fifty-nine for the option two.
Yeah, so, yeah, option one would be only five hundred or more. Now, option, option one is four eighty-six or higher. All right. Okay, we good with that one? Carol, you good? Is that the end of M-CAS?
That's the end of M-CAS.
Does anybody have questions about any of the M-CAS scores before we move on?
I do, sorry.
To programming?
Could you go back, Carol or Craig, be be to the one where you showed the third, fourth versus fifth? Not the growth percentile, just the, yeah, that guy.
This one?
So, Carl, when you look at that, and I hear you regarding there's less teachers in fifth grade, but when I look at third, fourth versus fifth, I'm thinking, what's the magic? What's needed? So, when, what do you think about, and maybe you're going to address this, and so I can hold the question if it's easier. But like, to me, there's obviously a real need, and so that's probably a target area for you. Is that something you're going to speak to in a couple of minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
But I also think it's fair to say it starts before third grade.
A hundred percent, certainly.
I think that's part of what you're saying.
Okay, that's all.
So, as we get into the next part, we're just going to, I'm going to take you through school by school or grade level by grade level and talk about what's going on. But some overarching themes you're going to see is a commitment to consistent, momentous professional development. That's not one-offs. We're continuing it throughout the year. We're looking at selecting and adopting high-quality instructional materials, which I think, to Meg's point, is going to look to address some of the things we're seeing in our M-CAS scores. We are continually using data to drive decision-making and instructional practice, always looking for ways to enhance and include parents and guardians and increase communication, look for opportunities for horizontal and vertical alignment. And I talk about some of the grants that we've secured and applied for to help us achieve all these goals. But there's a lot going on right now, so it's exciting. So, we can start with Shining Star. Last year at Shining Star, we focused on common literacy assessments. And when you think of three- and four-year-olds, literacy assessments look different. So, we talked about and normed around what data needed to be captured, how to score data, best practices for administering assessments. And I worked with their All-Stars. I couldn't resist upon there, of course. But their teachers to really get some consistent practices. So, this year is going to be seeing and monitoring how those assessments are working out, what adaptations need to be made, and going on from there. At Brookside and Memorial, there's a lot going on, and there's a lot of really exciting things. So, K two staff have been actively engaged in professional development in beginning reading and based on the science of reading, which is a large body of research that informs best practices for reading instruction. We have commitment from our building leaders, the support of our instructional coaches, and our teachers have been engaging in learning regularly on like a weekly basis during grade level time or contractual time or professional team collaborative time to not only digest this like dense content of research and science for best practices, but also looking at ways to apply their learning directly to classroom instruction. So, what we're learning is really agnostic of any curriculum or program. It's just good practices for teaching students. We've also purchased decodable texts to support foundational literacy. And decodable texts are different, there's a lot of texts that at the early ages are very repetitive and predictable. I see a ball. I see a swing. I see a fence. And it encourages some students to rely on picture cues. And we really want to focus and emphasize decoding and those foundational skills. But we want to give them text that looks like real books and is richly illustrated and gives them an opportunity to practice their phonics in ways that's achievable and is in parallel with the skills they're learning. So, we won't put text in front of them with skills they haven't learned yet because we want them to be successful readers. So, that's been a great add, and teachers are very excited about that. At grade one, last spring, we were awarded a grant from the One Aid Foundation in which we are able to offer high-dose literacy one-on-one virtual tutoring for our grade one students. So, students have fifteen minutes a day. They log on, and they have a live virtual tutor where they get targeted systematic instruction on their exact area of need. It's pretty amazing. The kids are really digging it. They log, get... Um, it's pretty amazing, the kids are really digging it, they like getting on, they have their tutors. Um, we have IGNITE supporting us with some multilingual tutors to support our multilingual students. Um, so that's been really cool to see. We also are reviewing, um, curriculum for core ELA adoption for K-two. Um, so we have foundational programming in place, but this is to offer complex grade-level text to our students um, for reading, writing, speaking, and listening, to develop their background knowledge and vocabulary. So that's, that's starting now, we're looking at the curriculum landscape and we're looking at what other districts like us have put in place. Uh, we've also applied for the HQIM grant for, um, high-quality instructional material. So I'm not sure when those awards will be sent out, but, um, that has been proposed as well. So that's our, our K-two happenings. Um, at Woodland.
Excuse me, one second.
Sure. Carl, can I ask a question on this update before you move on, sorry?
Absolutely.
Is the decodable text that you were just talking about, was that the one that there's certain classes participating, or is that across the board?
That's across the board.
Okay.
So what we did for, um, we got grade-level series for teachers.
Okay.
And then we got some shared emergent reader sets to support maybe a, a second-grade student or a first-grade student who needs some reinforcement with prior phonics skills.
So those are textbooks or books that are available in every classroom at K-2 currently? Okay, that's awesome. Is there for this level, like, an ST math equivalent for ELA? And not that it needs to be on the computer, but is there something that's repeating those foundational pieces that we're exploring?
Yeah, we actually, we have iReady, um, as our universal screener diagnostic. And at each school K to five, we have iReady My Path available for teachers, um, and students. And what it does, it takes the results of the iReady diagnostic where the students are placed and sets them on an individualized learning path. Um, it's adaptive where, well, if, if student is not successful X many times, it shuts it off so they're not gonna continuously fail. Um, and teachers can assign specific lessons, so if you have a small group you know is working on one skill, I can give them a targeted lesson for that skill.
Sorry, this is probably more a question for that table. Is that grant-funded? Cause that's pretty expensive. Is that something that, I thought we, just, what if we discontinued that?
Uh, no, um, we're, we're funding that right now locally.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
We, we had.
I've heard tremendous things about it, I think it's great. I didn't realize that beyond COVID, we've been able to maintain it, so that's excellent.
Yes, it was free during COVID.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we funded it locally.
Excellent. And then the other thing, Carol.
iReady is K, right, Craig?
It is, but not the My Path.
Not the My Path, okay.
Just to clarify, cause it's not on here, Carol, and so maybe it's applied. Are the common assessments already happening K to two, and that's why that's not a priority? Or is that also something that's being evaluated?
That's something that, as we look at core curriculum, um, looking at how to get some more, yeah.
Thanks, that makes sense, thank you. Thanks, Chris.
But I, I also think this, the IGNITE grant that we have is going to have tremendous results for our, our first-grade kids. I, I, I can't stress it enough, and I, Carol's been in there a number of times, but seeing the kids log on, they get fifteen minutes with all individual tutors, basically the whole school. It's, um, it's just, it's, to me, mind-boggling how they have this many tutors. I don't know.
I don't know. Um, so iReady, great program, has a lot of data for, like, for teachers and parents.
Yeah.
Are we getting those out to parents?
Yes, this is the first year we're sharing all iReady results for reading and math. So, um, at the beginning of the year, I, I believe we sent out a notice with when the test administration dates are, so parents and guardians will know when to expect the results. Um, our next administration, I believe, is in February, and those, they go home hard copy.
Yeah, they went home, they went home beginning of October.
So hard copy, live at home. Can a parent go online and, and see anything, or?
They, we don't have a way to distribute them online right now, that's on our, like, would be great because I've seen my own children's backpacks come home, and sometimes things don't get there, but, um, but, you know, I think we're always looking at ways, this is the first year we're doing it, is to how, how to communicate out to parents to expect that, and if it doesn't come home, you know, who, who to follow up with.
Right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
IGNITE tutoring, um, this is not really a reading question, it's more of a, is it working at Brookside now question?
It is, there's two classrooms that, um, it seems like the last kid that gets on has trouble getting on.
Okay.
In the, just two classrooms. Um, but we've tried different things, so if you can imagine, we have, I don't even know, what do we, I don't know what the, they, it's two hundred and seventy seats, but I don't know what, what the, um, split is between Memorial and Brookside, but imagine basically an entire school trying to log on at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, and I was gonna share for anyone who didn't know what I was referencing, I did talk to Kevin Cullen, and the first time they tried to do it at Brookside, it was the equivalent of running seventy virtual classrooms at one time.
Or more.
Collapsed, it was actually, might have actually been more, and it collapsed network.
Yeah.
Which was, uh,
But.
A struggle, but I think it was just a scheduling thing that if they just staggered, we'd be fine.
Yes, they split the times.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so now it's, there's two classrooms where it seems Kevin's working on it, actually. It's just like the last kid that gets in for some reason.
Okay.
Is not getting on.
That's good.
And, and it's hard for us to say, I know that we figured it out, but I, I also am wondering if it's Chromebook related too, that the Chromebooks seem to, um, have a hard time running the, the meetings.
It could be, it could be. It is just a Zoom meeting, right?
Pretty much.
Mm-hmm. I will say that during the technical challenges, um, students and staff at Brookside demonstrated extreme patience and flexibility, so it's, it was much appreciated and, um, you know, I'm glad we're heading in a more positive direction.
Quick question, actually, on the iReady, going back to what Mike had said. Obviously, that iReady must, it spits out a document that's sent to the parents, that's hard copied. Is there capabilities of storing that information? Like, is there something that we need to buy into the, into, um, you know, more features that parents could access? Do we know that yet, or?
I don't know the answer to the parents accessing it, but we pull, we pull, for example, the iReady data onto, um, Open Architects.
Yeah.
Um, teachers can access all the results digitally.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think that.
I don't believe that iReady has a parent portal or any capability, but.
Will.
We can follow more.
Yeah, I'd love for there to be though.
Right, yes, you know, based on Mike's kinda comment, yeah, you're getting that hard copy, but, you know, obviously, it's just that much easier to, to log in.
I agree, and I think it, it, so, as challenging as this is, I would like for there, at some point, to be the ability to forget the paper report card, forget the paper iReady, um, I don't know, I don't know if we're there yet, um. I know that, uh, like, the upper levels, we have access to the parent portal and parents can see report cards there, but I think we still do send them home paper.
You do.
You do.
I, I don't know. It seems like, it seems redundant.
No problem. Any other questions on the K to two side? All right.
All right, so moving up to Woodland, um, you're gonna see a similar theme here. We have professional development in science of reading for our third-grade teachers, our fourth-grade teachers, and our fifth-grade reading teachers. Um, additionally, all our special educators and our EL teachers are participating in that. Um, we are, again, looking at using in data, iReady data to drive our instruction. And I think the science of reading is supporting, like, just a greater understanding of the different domains of data that's available, um, to support students. We're also looking at adopting core ELA curriculum for implementation in, um, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we're looking at a, a, a large span of curriculum overhaul. I was at Stacy, um, and looking at some of the old anthologies that are around, and they have a copyright date of two thousand and six, so, you know, I think it's, it's, it's an exciting time. Any questions?
We are Woodland and Stacy.
So just a quick question, so when you mentioned the professional development that the teachers are attending, so for fifth grade, you said it's the reading teachers, are the humanities teachers attending that as well?
They are not, they are, they're still working on developing and fine-tuning the curriculum as they're going, so they have it available to them, but as far as their contractual obligations, they're focused more on the course development.
Go, sorry, go ahead.
Sort of, I may be similar to Robyn's, um, just to confirm though, Carol, there haven't been any changes to the reading curriculum? Have, have there been additions to the reading curriculum in fifth grade?
There haven't been any changes.
So reading is what it was?
Every, everything's.
So.
So read, actually, I will, uh, to clarify, we did change some of the curriculum to incorporate more of the ELA writing standards. So there has been some curriculum development work done by teachers.
Okay.
To, and they've worked closely with the humanities team to really get a grasp on who's teaching what standards and in what sequence, so kids aren't getting double-whammyed with essay writing and those types of assignments.
Okay.
So there's been a slight shift in reading to absorb more of the writing standards.
And just kinda thinking about what you said before, when, with the, looking at how the fifth grade ELA scores were really good, and part of that potentially could be because they're specialists in that grade. They have, you know, teachers who are dedicated to teaching reading, whereas you have more generalists if they're in fourth grade. I know in fourth grade, there's somewhat of a shift where some teachers are teaching more literacy and some teaching, is that new? Or is that something we've been doing? And just, I'm wondering why we wouldn't have more robust fourth-grade scores if they're also kind of dividing the tasks that way as well?
I would say that in fourth grade, there is, they are, you know, there's a reading, they switch for reading and math. Um, but in fifth grade, there's more alignment than other grades because of the, the smaller number of teachers and the collaboration time. Um, so I think when we talk about introducing high-quality core curriculum, that gives us a common starting ground to have more alignment, more potential for alignment um, in grades three and four, where it's kind of naturally happened in grade five.
Matt?
Uh, mine might get long, potentially.
Go forward.
Megan, go first. You're good, okay, um.
Brought my tea.
Okay, um, now that, now that I, I've, I've kinda seen this, we've, we've covered elementary and, and we saw the MCAS scores, and they get better towards the fifth grade, and there's a little bit of a dip, probably the transition in the middle school is a big factor there. Um, I, I'm just, I'm very curious to know what those scores could look like if we weren't handing our third-grade teachers a student body with half of them behind in reading.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm seeing, um, materials being talked about being purchased, um, decodable texts, the, uh, look at DESI curriculum, but there's no mention of, of piloting or searching for a program like the math program that is an all-encompassing, um, I guess, focus and direction for everybody K through five to be driving reading in the same direction. Uh, and I'm just curious, is there something like that out there for literacy? Is there a reason we're not driving towards something like that?
No, there is, and then when you talk about high-quality instructional materials, that's really what we're talking about. The ELA equivalent of a le- a lesser than math, or a program that's gonna be the foundation on which we build. Um, so when I talk about, like, the decodables are separate, those are supplementary, but for core grade-level standards, that's what we're looking to adopt K at Brookside, Memorial, and Woodland.
Okay, and is that, is that something where, where you guys will sit down and grab a bunch of different programs and pilot them with different groups, and then, kinda how Carrie just locked, I don't remember what she said, locked everybody in a room until they all agreed to, uh, to drive one program, is, is that the plan?
Yeah, that, so we're, we're looking at it, so we're, think of a funnel. We're starting with a, you know, what's gonna meet the criteria that we need based on DESI's ratings, on Q rate, um, what's gonna meet the needs of our local lens and student population. And we're gonna narrow it down to probably two programs to pilot, um, and then we're gonna lock everyone in a room till we come to consensus. And, and as DESI, you know, DESI says, in this, I really think is a great analogy, everyone wants a unicorn, but unicorns don't exist. So we're looking for the strongest horse we can.
Horse.
Um, but that's gonna allow us to create some vertical and horizontal alignment and give students, um, background knowledge that from one grade level to another, as a teacher, if I know what they're coming with horizontally, um, I can build on that.
So long and short of it is, we're coming with a budget ask.
I was just gonna ask that question.
For a new literacy program.
Okay, so the piloting is gonna be all done in the next month?
We're gonna have quotes, no, we'll have quotes, and then we'll say, basically, this is what you can expect for the range. And hopefully the pilots, the pilot will be done this winter, spring.
I assume you have to, if we're gonna pilot five, we're gonna have to pay for the pilot of five, and then from there, shift off? Or do they give you?
A lot of times, publishing companies will give you the pilot materials, cause they want you to purchase the book.
Okay, so the idea would be, we'll, we'll have a range of money set in the budget to spend on whatever one you choose.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're anticipating, you know, we're getting quotes and trying to forecast that cost.
Excellent.
Can I just add one thing to, just to, to respond?
Please.
I think the other piece is, like, a curriculum is, I think, you know, like, a, a, a consistent curriculum, K through five is gonna help. But the other issue we're facing, and this impacts math as well, is that, you know, I think thirty-four percent of our population is also learning English, and fifty percent of our population is speaking a language other than English as their primary language in the home. And so there's, there's double challenges, so I don't wanna set the expectation that a curriculum is gonna be this magic, you know, panacea that's gonna, that's gonna kind of suddenly, we're gonna go from like, you know, fifty to eighty percent, you know, within a couple of years, that's not gonna happen. I think, you know, some of the reasons why you see some of the growth later on is because students also, and I don't wanna dismiss what's happening in fifth grade, cause I think they're doing an outstanding job. But students are also, that are with us consistently are picking up the language, cause it takes, you know, three to five years to really pick up English in a way that you can kind of academically engage at a, at a pretty proficient level, so I think that's just important to say.
Yeah, and I think when it comes to math, you're at math is pretty universal.
Yeah, well, but also math's very verbal, too.
It is now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But the core of math is universal, whereas, if you don't know English, it's really hard to read.
Numbers on page, yeah, and that's why Gigi's so good, because, because it's, it's a lot of visual stuff.
There's no language, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, decodable text you keep talking about, was that the, the purchase last year? All right, I think, um, I think I'm good for now.
Megan, before you go, can I build on one thing from Matt's question? And it, it might be to Craig and, or administration group. So when we say we're gonna adopt, where we're adopting the curriculum in twenty-four, twenty-five, is that based on a DESI push? Or is that based on a curriculum adoption that we're pushing something because of our test scores to try to improve?
Um, a little of both, I would say. Um, yes, so the new accountability system is, I, although I don't have all of the, um, I don't have all the particulars yet, but the word that we've gotten is you'll get, you'll get points if you've adopted a high-quality program. You, so there's a section in there that'll say, you get so many points because you've adopted this program. Or it won't have to be one particular one, but one that's rated highly, um, by DESI. So that's one, I can't say that's the reason, though. The reason is, you know, we have nineteen, um, kindergarten classrooms and nineteen different things happening. When they get to first grade, and then they, they mix now, now I've got these kids in front of us, but these kids have had a different experience, and these kids that have had a different experience, and these kids. And so then by the time they get to Woodland, you can imagine, there's all kinds of different ways that kids have been taught. So I think to Matt's point, we're trying to, to build this program from the ground up where we're using similar program, we're starting at the foundational level with this professional development so that we all have the same, um, foundational knowledge about reading instruction. And it'll all lead to similar instructional practices that are happening across the, the board. And all teachers will have access to the same high-quality materials.
Yeah, cause I think, you know, as Matt said too, we saw that ST math, you know, that, the success there, so I think, you know, kinda building upon that avenue where we, the teachers, as you said, locked themselves in a room, they came out with a program, so is that kind of the, I would hope, would be the expectation? With it, I guess the other question is, you know, has our curriculum, has it evolved? Has this ELA curriculum evolved over time? Are we still using a curriculum that was instituted five, ten years ago?
Um, I would say foundations is something that we've, we're using across the board and have been using for a number of years. Other than that, um, the teachers are, teachers are, are building their own curriculum, really, um, based on the standards. And in some, in some cases, it works really well, see grade five. Um, but like, like Carol mentioned, grade five, we have people that have been doing it for a But like, like Carol mentioned, in grade five, we have people that have been doing it for a long time. And they have solid instructional practices and they really know their reading instruction. But then we have that, we have other pockets in other grade levels where folks are in the, the same boat and doing a, a really good job. It's really difficult though when we have new teachers that come on board with no experience and there's nothing really to give them. And that, that makes for a challenging year for them. In, in some ways, it makes it a challenging year for students too. So, I think that aligning, bringing on a program is going to align what's happening in horizontally across the grade level, but then vertically too.
The, the challenge with literacy and picking a curriculum, which is different from math too, is there's a lot of, and Carol will second this, I think, enthusiastically, there's a lot of really strong and passionate feelings about different ways of teaching reading. Whereas math, I don't want to minimize the work that, that was done by Carrie, but, but there's, it's, it's going to be a different process for, for, for a literature, literacy program and ELA program than for, than for mathematics. I think there's a, there's, you know, you can get five very, very bright, accomplished educators in a room and they're going to have very, very strong and different opinions.
You know, there are many teachers that are, are begging for a program, but there are also many teachers that are saying, hey,
I've got it.
We're doing, we're doing fine here. So, that's a, that's another challenge.
I think.
And the other, the other challenge is, yeah, I want a program, but it's going to be this program. So, when you choose this program, no, no, forget it, I don't want the program now.
And I think also, if we think about trying to support our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities and all students, if we have specialist educators who are working across grade levels and trying to differentiate and you have, they're working with teachers from three different classrooms, it's hard to meet those demands. So, you know, looking at how to build scaffolds for one core program is going to really support students as well.
Megan, you got a question?
I just had a couple of quick questions, Carol. So, I love seeing all the data-driven decision-making on this slide, right? Great alignment with our strategic plan, et cetera, et cetera. Could you speak to as you dig into the data? Like, are you seeing specific areas that are consistent across I-Ready and MCAS and other assessments? That it's like, these are the areas that need focus?
The I-Ready data gives us more precise data on like skills-based competencies, like phonemic awareness and phonics. And I think we're seeing that's been really valuable for our teachers, especially as we engage in this professional development for science of reading to, you know, there's a rope and instead of just knowing the rope is fraying, but where is it starting to fray? And the data is allowing us to dive into that. Um, and just today, we had a literacy committee meeting and there was teachers from Woodland there and they were talking about how they're using flexible grouping based on I-Ready data to target student needs in a way that is really going to benefit them. As far as like the, the other domains within I-Ready, we've correlated the data and it is reflective. So, that we're seeing parallels. So, it's both elements of data are telling a similar story.
Okay. Are CTLs utilized K to five?
We have a CTL and a curriculum coordinator. So, we have actually a co-CTL role at Woodland and they're utilized. One of them is on the literacy committee.
That's my next question. They're participating obviously in that work.
Yes.
And then are you currently, Carol, with the literacy work, leveraging coaches at all?
Yes, our coaches have been really instrumental with supporting this PD this year. They participated in the training for the keys to literacy last year and engaged in the facilitator training. So, working with them to not only support planning PD, but also how, once the PD's over and teachers are going and trying these instructional practices, knowing that the instructional coaches are there to support them has been really helpful.
Gotcha, okay. And then maybe just one follow-up on that, my path. Is every student engaging in that or is that only if you, like, a specific need has been identified?
It's available to all students.
Okay, so teachers decide at their discretion whether or not their class or their students.
Yeah, and the, the, the amount of time to yield the benefits is, I think it's thirty to forty-nine minutes a week, so.
So, the consistency is similar to the ST math?
Correct.
You need to use it regularly to see that. It might be interesting, Craig, at some point, just to share data in terms of how many, what percent of the population is taking advantage of that?
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Chris.
No problem. Michael, do you have a question?
We're good.
All right.
I, I do want to just add on to the fact, um, you brought up the coaches. Yeah, the coaches are supporting the teachers here. In the meantime, they're also supporting coaches with the implementation still. So, they have a lot on their plate too, trying to, okay, we're going to support the reading over here. On the other hand, we're going to support the, the math over here. So, yeah, in some ways, in some ways, we're stretching them a little thin, but they're up for it.
All right, moving on to Stacy, you're going to see some similar themes here. At Stacy, teachers are participating in the science of reading as part of our partnership. We were awarded the GLEAM grant for six to eight. GLEAM is an acronym for growing literacy equity across Massachusetts. We're partnering with a consultant at TNTP. We have professional development in science of reading that's geared towards secondary students and instructional practices. We're looking at, again, data and using I-Ready data and becoming a little more data literate and bringing data into discussions. We're going to be reviewing and selecting a core program similar to the path that math followed next year. This is where there's a lot of big feelings about texts that teachers have taught for years and years. And I can relate to that, having been a middle school teacher at Stacy. But again, we're looking to provide this, a same student experience across a grade level and have consistent funds of knowledge that we can send students from one grade to another. So, we've been working, ELA and reading has departmental time weekly as well as every other contractual time where this has been the focus of our work. And within Stacy, there's a smaller subset of teachers that are the GLEAM team that are really diving into analyzing the market landscape and looking at the curate rubric and, you know, beginning to look at instructional materials.
So, just a question about Stacy. So, I'm looking at the MCAS scores and how we get, we're at, you know, fifty percent mean eighth grade being at fifth grade and then we drop down a little bit in Stacy. And, um, and I hear what you're saying about the transition, but seventh and eighth grade are even lower than sixth grade was. Seventh and eighth grade, do they all take reading? Or if they take foreign language still, do they not take a reading class?
So, in seventh and eighth grade, this is where we really started using I-Ready and MCAS data to drive some, some needs for programming. We look at the MCAS and I-Ready data and we see who is below grade level in reading. And for students who are below grade level, they will take ELA and reading. For students who are demonstrating grade level proficiency, they'll be taking world language. So, the, the, the class sizes of reading and world language have flipped over the past years. It's a new programming model. So, it would be difficult to see the results in, in the MCAS data yet. But, so we, at seventh grade, we have two reading teachers as opposed to three in six. And then in eighth grade, we have one reading teacher, so.
So, do we, so is it about like two-thirds of the seventh graders and one-third of the eighth graders are taking reading?
Correct.
Yeah.
Matt, you got a question?
Yeah, do we have any data on how many students are, are behind in reading in elementary school compared to by the time they get to eighth grade?
Yeah, we have that data available through I-Ready. And it, it will disaggregate by the overall score, like a grade level correlation. And then you can see within the domains, you know, if there's trends. So, for example, there are students at Stacy who may be demonstrating grade level proficiency in one domain such as vocabulary, but may still have a need for phonics or phonological awareness.
Sure. Is that something that we can get, report?
Stacy I-Ready data?
Just probably from like.
Let me, let, let's talk offline.
Okay, yeah.
You tell me exactly what you're looking for and I can see if I can pull something. Okay.
Yep.
Change is hard. Thank you. So, I, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or Craig. So, as you said, literacy is a bit different than math. Math is a bit more standardized. There's probably a lot more opinions. I've already heard grumblings. Right? So, what's your plan to bring the district together to push a program through to align across the whole district?
I think we're going to have a lot of difficult conversations. I think, um, I think it's clear that, that a change needs to happen. And I think that the process that we're using it, we're using now, I think was, is going to demonstrate that we've vetted the best program for us. Uh, and then we'll get the professional development and engage teachers in those conversations.
How are we going to measure it?
Uh, measure what?
Progress.
I think we'll use MCAS and I-Ready data as well as the, whatever assessments that, that come with the program.
So, last meeting, she presented a, a great graph, I'm going to forget it, the Valley of Despair.
Oh, yes.
Right? And it, it was change, basically change management, which is, you know, has never. So, how are we going to track this program similar to what we did for math? Obviously, the content's different, but I think the idea of tracking the program is still the same idea. And as a SWOP member, I understand, we say, hey, you know, here, here, here's where we are, here's the Valley of Despair. So, it'll come up and then it's going to get better. And it was like a three, seven-year, you know, change. I would like to see something like that holistically over time to see where we're at and what we're doing. So, when we start to enter the Valley of Despair, the district's not surprised. Like, right here, there's a lot of grumbling, we're working it out, but we're going to come out of it soon. So, I, I would like to see that as a whole to make sure that this Valley of Despair is not two or three years, right? And, and we're stuck. I'd like to see that there's progress. So, I'm not sure how you can do that, but that would be really helpful, I think, for us to help push the district forward and say, hey, you know what, you're going to come out of it soon, it's okay. And, and here's the standard.
Yep, all right, we'll get that.
I have a question that may not be relevant, but is student input ever considered when going forward with a particular curriculum at all?
Yeah, I think as part of our pilot design, we'll have teacher-focused groups and an important part of that is student-focused groups to get their input.
How is that weighted? Like, is it just like, did you like it? And, okay, you did it or didn't it? And we're just going to really go with what the teachers are recommending or asking?
I think we can, you know, look at, so there's different text complexity and criteria rubrics for maybe creating a survey that's a little more student-friendly language that mirrors some of those aspects and indicators that we're looking for from our teachers. I think for, you know, student input, looking at engagement is a, a huge piece. So, it has to be done methodically so we get data to support the choice, not just anecdotal data. And I think a survey is a good way to do that.
Thank you. One of the, if I can just add something to that too. One of, one of the pilot challenges is, and this is content agnostic, is that you see people like, like really advocating for the pilot that they participated in. Or it, it sometimes it's an eliminator where everybody says, oh, this is terrible. You know, and you don't really get like, you're not going to get like, I think, consensus that way necessarily.
Sure.
Just generally, just from my experience, just over years doing, you know, just curriculum adoptions in a variety of content areas.
Makes sense, right.
But I think the, the feedback's important and sometimes it can be very powerful and meaningful when you have that discussion, when you make that final decision.
So, Brendan, as much as just made me think of this. So, I think, I'm pretty sure you did this a couple of years ago when it was in the summer in the park and you'd give out free books. And that was really great. And, and, you know, as you know, one of the biggest things that can be done too before kids even get here is how much reading they're doing at home in early years. Through this work, is there any more of a push to getting books in the hands of kids at home as well as at school? Or are we really more just kind of, I know that the family piece isn't something we can control, but I was just thinking about having students as stakeholders and thinking about parents as stakeholders. Is there anything more we can do to get just really books in the hands of kids outside of school?
I think, you know, through Title One, every year at the end of the year, we get sent students home for the summer, each with a brand-new book. Last year, we were really fortunate, the Toys for Tots, the Marines have a literacy program and they donated like seven pallets of books that we were able to send students home with. So, we're, we're focusing on our circle of control, but we're also, I'm constantly looking for ways to get books in the hands of kids outside of schools. Whether it's through Title One funding, other grants or donations, what kind of programming or family engagement nights we can have to encourage families and, you know, model reading aloud. We had a cozy up and read event last night, or last year at Memorial with little construction paper campfires and chocolate chip cookies. And, you know, just looking for ways like that to build a culture of literacy that is encouraging support at home.
Just thought of this, because our, our building trades kids built a whole bunch of little libraries. And, um, they were thinking of donating them to each of the, or elementary, um, just classrooms. Oh, I don't know what that means. Anyways, um.
Let's talk quicker.
It might, it might actually, um, maybe if we put them around town and stock them up, um, maybe that's a better use for them.
Well, and just, just an idea too, like thinking about, you know, as a parent, the request for donations. I would be happily to send old books that my child's done with to Brookside and Memorial, right? Like, even doing like a pass it down day or something.
Yeah.
High schoolers send books to state, I don't know, just use the resources we have in, in the community too. Just, I, I just thought, I was so impressed by that like summer series.
Yeah.
Where you did that and, and every time kids would get a book, I thought that was so wonderful and just the more we can maybe create that.
Yeah.
That's my thing, Rich.
Megan, go.
Carol, I'm sorry if this is either not known or implied. Is there a chance we buy one curriculum K to eight or is it most likely it will be split?
So, as we funnel down our choices, looking for ones that check, that offer the potential for alignment is going to be a parameter.
Okay.
It may not necessarily be where we land.
Sure.
But to have that capability, we're, we're only looking at ones that are available K to eight.
Thank you.
High school?
High school. So, we got a lot going on K to eight. So, the high school is continuously just evolving with the development of writing with colors. Looking at ways to, the, the ability to provide consistent, specific, targeted feedback for individual students at the high school is really amazing. We have a lot of alignment among the department just naturally. It's, they're a tight-knit department that's worked together for a long time. So, the alignment that's, that we're looking at as a concern for the, some of the lower grades is not necessarily, it's, it's in place already at the high school. So, as far as what we're doing, we're looking at data as well. Like, when we got our MCAS results, our CTL in the department quickly identified the students who needed the retest and kind of put a plan in place to support those students. But as far as the changes for core programming that we're implementing at K eight, it's not going, we're not bringing the program into the high school at this time. You know, and hopefully we'll see a trickle-up effect of the results of K to eight for our high school students. But, you know, there's continued emphasis on really critical feedback and looking at student portfolios over a broad scope of time.
Michael?
My wife's a high school teacher, English, so I hear about it all the time. The department in the high school obviously is very strong, which I think is well known. One of the complaints I hear from the peers of the group is that there's no alignment with the younger grades coming into the high school. They feel they have to start to reteach things and then bring them back in. So, I appreciate that we're not going to bring something into the high school because they're, they're solid. But how are we going to align the whole district? Right? So, when the eighth grade starts to move students up to the high school, there are expectations being set.
I think once we have a little more alignment. I think once we have, um, a little more alignment at six, seven, and eight, we can have a little more clear, shared expectations of what students are coming in with and what instruction they've received, what texts they've read, um, that can be built upon. So really, is, even though the high school isn't engaged in this process, um, being transparent with the curriculum we're looking at and what we ultimately select and what assessments are available and the data that may be available from those assessments. 'Cause right now, the student experience and teachers may be teaching different texts at different times, using different writing graphic organizers. So if we can tell our high school teachers, this is what we are expecting them to come in with, it's clear, it's consistent. Hopefully, that will mitigate some of the reteaching and the time spent on those skills.
Are the high school teachers involved in helping choose?
Not at this time, but I think once we narrow down to, um, you know, what two programs will field test, we can start to introduce them to the curriculum and materials and.
I just want to reiterate the work that Mr. Cunningham is doing, and certainly the second Michael, we have a phenomenal team. And so I don't mean to dismiss any of them, but my child does have him this year, and I have been blown away with the detailed specificity, thoughtfulness of the communications. And just, if there's anything that can be done to replicate that at any level across this building, it is mind-blowing and as a parent, like, just beyond impressed. And so the work should definitely be commended at every level, 'cause it's incredibly impressive. I don't know if.
That's what my Friday emails, uh, last year.
It's remarkable, like it's, everyone in the district would be talking about it if your child, like, it's just amazing, so.
Yeah. I don't know if he ever sleeps, I mean, it's, it's amazing.
I'm not sure how he could, but it's really impressive.
Yeah. So, when we think about looking ahead, you know, we're, we're having ongoing, we're looking at core curriculum adoption for ELA. We're looking at, you know, the, the PD efforts and momentum we've gotten to continue, that it's not just, you know, we're looking at building the foundation of instructional practice and research, um, to continue the work, but also looking at building that practice of keeping up with research and instructional practices, continuing to focus on data and become more data literate, and, you know, always looking for ways to include parents, guardians in the community. Um, I'm really, the Milford Town Library has been a tremendous partner over the past years, showing up at our family engagement nights, um, issuing library cards on the spot, so, and just looking for other ways to engage community partners and look for opportunities to, um, you know, bridge those, those homeschool connections. So that's, that's kind of, that's what I got.
Great. Any other follow-up questions? I'm not seeing, so, well, thanks again for coming in and presenting tonight, we really appreciate your time. Appreciate answering all of our questions, so, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, yeah, seeing what, what is to come budget-wise and in the future when we, uh, kind of narrow down, you can present hopefully in the springtime of where we're at and the directions we'll begin.
Yeah, great, thank you so much, it was my pleasure.
Great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving on then, we have a, uh, just a general facilities, uh, discussion that I put on. Um, obviously, we're just trying to keep tabs on kind of some of the projects we have going on. You know, Dr. McIntyre, I'm not sure if you have anything at this point that you can add in?
Yeah, I can, I can run through a few things if you have additional topics, uh, I'd say jump in, I might have Kathy jump in on a couple if she has updates.
Exactly, thank you.
Why don't we start with cafeteria tables? I know that was a hot topic at the last meeting. And you, like I said, Kathy on this one may have a more recent update, but I know, uh, Principal Ollin had given an update to the committee via email, uh, about thirty-one tables that have twelve seats and ten high-top tables that will be placed near windows in the cafeteria and the process of being ordered. I know we were looking at expedited shipping options, you know where that is, Kath?
We did go forward with the expedited, but, um, we, all we had right now, or have right now, is that the order's been placed and it's in process.
Okay, so that's the, so that's the update there, so, if we get something more solid, we'll obviously share over there.
That's great.
But I think it was, what was it, ten to twelve weeks, and so expedite, we, we hope it's gonna be sooner than that.
Six, yeah, we're hoping.
Okay. Uh, turf field fence, this came up as an issue. Athletic Director Peter Boucher has reached out to the company that installed the field and shared our concerned about, concerns about the fence. The track and turf company are currently collaborating with each other to determine how they will repair it and, you know, they're gonna get back to the.
Yep. Make sure it's on the radar screen.
Yep, yep, so that's in progress. Uh, softball lighting project. So, i- if you've driven by, you see the poles are up. Um, we anticipate in the next couple of weeks that they will be, um, connecting it with electricity, which creates light. Uh, as Carlos has explained to me on, 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 on occasions. I think in the next couple of weeks, we should be wrapping that process up, I think two weeks after Thanksgiving is kind of what we're looking for. Sometimes a part doesn't come in and it's a little longer, but that, that seems to be where we're at right now, and it seems to be moving along pretty well. I know they started later than we had hoped, but the timeline they've given us for like the install process has been pretty, pretty on, on track. Another hot topic, pun intended, is, uh, MHS boilers. Obviously, what, you know, and Matt alluded to this, and I'm sure it was discussed previously too, is, uh, when the boiler's up and running, the second one where the repairs are a little more extensive, we're currently waiting for parts to arrive. Once the parts do arrive, then they'll begin to get that boiler ready to go. Um, Carlos continues to update me daily on, on the project. And when we have something that's a little more solid in terms of the timeline for that second boiler, I'll, I'll give the committee an update. Uh, what else do I have? Be, Brookside Elementary School addition. Carlos Pena, who's our facilities director, has been working with the onsite contractor, um, and is addressing the asphalt surrounding the addition. He also addressed a couple of issues with the HVAC, one of the systems wasn't working in one of the classrooms. Um, he's also got contact information for every subcontractor, so if there are issues, he can go directly to the source, which I think is great. They're adding another access point, a closet for water fountains and sump pumps. One of the concerns when we did a walkthrough, when we were close to substantial completion, was, um, the water fountains in there, they, they're the heating element for the hot waters, was, I don't wanna say it was exposed, but, you know, little elementary kids might have interest and access to it, and they put cabinets in place to cover those up. The long-range facility subcommittee is meeting with the town engineer this week, she shared, uh, I think the week after Thanksgiving?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Um, she shared some concerns that she had, uh, and we're kind of working through that. Carlos is also looking at an issue, um, with the roof that he's working through with, uh, with, again, the team that installed it. The piece, let me just see if I have one other thing. And then the towel dispensers for the sinks have been hung, which wasn't in place when we kind of opened up the, the access. Pest control, and Kathy might be able to add on this one too. You know, Carlos is working with the pest companies, there are concerns in our buildings. Um, we've, you know, this is not a new issue, we've, we've had, you know, on and off different pests that we've, we've had issues with over the years. I know he's looking, he's been looking to like increase the, the engagement, and I know Kathy's been working on that. And anything you wanna add, Kath, or is that pretty much accurate?
He's just, um, built a good, uh, collaborative relationship with Milford Extermination, so that's a good thing for us. They're great.
What's this for? Where? Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Here.
Well, it's a high school, and there's a couple of other buildings where we're having some issues still.
Yep.
And this is the time of year where it picks up when the weather changes too.
Any questions in regards to any facilities?
Yes, Mike? Um, I hate to bring this up, termites, shining star. I know that we were gonna do something with like the walls and like look in them and something else, is it all done?
All done.
Taken care of?
Yep. They thought we might get another showing, um, in the fall.
That's a great showing.
Showing or, um, hatch, but, um, I do not believe that happened, so we were able to get everything complete in one, um.
Great. And we'll see what happens with the spring break.
Insensitive.
I do believe the update was that they, they opened the walls and looked, there was nothing in there. There were no, there were no nests inside the walls.
Okay. That is correct.
Yes, Rob.
Just speaking of shining star really quickly, the playground, 'cause it sounded like that had been a concern before with the mulch underneath the rubber being uneven, do we know if that's still the case or if that's been looked at at all?
You might be able to answer that one, Kath.
Yeah, uh.
I know Carlos has been.
Carlos is on it, um, but he's, he's also on eight hundred other things too, so. I don't wanna misspeak, but, um, I know he was, I don't know if he already has, going to be in contact with somebody to pull it up and fill in the mulch, basically. 'Cause you can't pull the mulch out, otherwise it, it defeats the purpose of the mats.
But, I, I can add to that, that, you know, I was here with the exterminator about a year ago and, uh, uh, previous facilities director, and that's the area they were targeting, that's where, that's where the colonies are. And, you know, the, the worker bugs come in and they do their thing and they bring it back to the colony, so that, that was definitely their target. I don't know specifics of what they did, but that was, you know, a primary.
It was also the pest control company.
Tree target too. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's who I was talking about.
Okay.
Michael, really simple question, uh, is, so Carlos is doing eight hundred and nine things, right? Is, um, is somebody helping him with like project management, like to keep the, like?
Yeah, so he's, he's got, um, two guys working with him.
Which I meant, right.
Yeah, and they're, they're phenomenal, they're phenomenal, Said and Victor, and they're, they're fantastic. Um, but basically what, what happens is, he's doing a combination of big projects that he knows he has to address as they come up, as well as, uh, tickets, as well as things that, like, he did a full assessment of all the buildings. Like, one of his first things to do was to visit all the buildings, figure out how all the buildings operated and, and identify what, what the issues were. And he's doing, he's basically prioritizing each of those three categories, so. There's something like when, like the boilers didn't start for us at the high school, that became the, you know, obviously the top priority at the time. But then he's got, you know, priorities for tickets, he's got priorities for projects as he sees them across the building.
So how, how's he doing that, and can we, maybe this is a, so this question, can they peer into that just to see, like, what the, the load is?
The load is significant.
I don't wanna get into detail, I just, I just wanna see like this, like.
You know, like what came up the other, last night, uh, and it's been somewhat of a conversation with us on the facilities subcommittee, is looking at the whole, um, department and possibly expanding it to an extent. And we, we figure that we're gonna have multiple facility subcommittee meetings, uh, in the, in the upcoming months. Um, probably more, some that Dr. McIntyre may not attend, because they might be, you know, um, as a result of a, a previous conversation, they might be quick twenty, thirty, forty-minute meetings, but this is on our radar, but it, you know, it, and it, again, it came up last night.
Yeah, I just wanna see like, uh, list, at some point, like, how, how we are organizing this thing, making sure we're moving through, you know, just.
Future agenda, yeah, sounds good.
Something.
I would, I would have Carlos come in and he can kind of like, you know, just come, uh, talk about the approach.
But not just talk about, like, show us like.
Yeah, no, he can, he can, tickets he's closed and.
And, and it might be his whiteboard, it was obviously take the picture, I know like Nancy, you go on the IT and they have the giant whiteboard and there's a huge list there, right? It's fantastic, like, even, it was something like that and they take a picture, here, here's how we do it. Just something to say, hey, it's not just we're firefighting, we're actually now starting to pick away at, at, at projects.
So I, I think, um, as John kind of alluded to, I think we have a lot to discuss on the, on the subcommittee, and that's something that I think that, that I could even take on, perhaps we talk about with Carlos at the subcommittee level, and perhaps I can put something together that's a snapshot of fires, not fires, maintenance stuff. And, and we talked about that last night, I know that, um, Chris Moran alluded to it, that, and even Carlos mentioned that, that he's spent a lot of time working on the problems right now, but they've yet to have time to get on stuff to prevent the problems that we have right now. So, um, and even to the, to the point of shining star, it's a discussion I think we're gonna have on the subcommittee level of not just bringing on a plumber into that, but maybe we need to bring on a grounds person as well, just to start trying to wrap up a lot of these things, because right now we have a great team, but eight hundred things, three guys can't do eight hundred things.
And if I, and if I can add to that, um, you know, we saw this kind of evolve in our technology department where, I think we were really treading water for a number of years, and then we started to expand the department. And now the customer service is, is pretty fantastic, 'cause we've got the right number of people and the right people.
Kevin Conne, amazing.
Oh, he's phenomenal.
What an absolute, sorry.
Yeah, he's phenomenal, he's phenomenal. The whole team is, does, does, does great work.
I think that's an excellent comparison, that's really, we're not going to.
I think we're with facilities where we were with technology maybe five or six, maybe seven years ago, where I think we're addressing issues and we're getting some things done and we're making the, everything work. But to really move to like preventative maintenance, to move to like, you know, really, you know, getting the place to where we, I think we all want it to be, I think is gonna require a greater investment, and it's something I think we've all talked about in a lot of different ways too, I think.
Any other questions? Great, no, thank you for that update, yeah, I appreciate, there's, there's a lot of things going on, so, um, and just trying to, yeah, close out projects the best we can at this point in time, and just making sure that we have everything, I's dotted, T's crossed, go ahead.
Sorry, before we move on, come on, come on, studies, um, a little uncomfortable, I'll, I'll bring it up. So, when we had a meeting with the, the, the tables and facilities, right? One thing I've noticed in the high school is that, that doesn't seem to be clear ownership of blocks of the building, right? So when we asked the principal and everybody who's here, who owns the cafeteria tables? Like, when you're in a restaurant, well, you own your tables and you own your kitchen, right? And when the board of health comes in, they, they look for that one person who's a service safety manager and they, they go to you and say, alright, we're, we're, we're doing our inspection. When it came to the tables, nobody seemed, when I asked the question, please no offense, everybody here, it was like, who owns the tables? And it was, it was not clear, right? Uh, when Matt brought up, you know, twenty, a while ago, it was.
With the what, I'm sorry?
The auditorium?
Auditorium, yeah.
Yeah, it was like here. Um, you know, somebody said, it's the principal's job, and then, it was, it, it seems very convoluted. And so the question is, and I think would be helpful, is, well, who owns what? You know, does Carla own the tables, right? Uh, does the principal own the tables? Who owns the auditorium? Who owns, you know, the hallways? So that's something that I've noticed over the past year or two, that there doesn't seem to be a very clear line of ownership of areas of the building. So I think that's something that.
Yeah, and that's something we probably need to clarify district-wide too, I think because there's been a couple of issues at the high school, you know, I think that's, it's put a chandelier on that, but I don't think, I think if you talk to Lisa Burns or Karina Lopez or any of the principals, I think there's a little bit of gray area in terms of some of these things, I think based on history and I think a number of other, other factors.
Yeah.
But it's something I think we can clarify, well, the reason.
Yeah.
Yeah. Please do.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, um, you know, like, somebody just mentioned grounds earlier. We, we've had a flagpole out, or two flagpole lights out for, uh, way longer period of time than it should have been, and it was reported to certain individuals and it never got to the right source to get it fixed, uh, at least that's the story I'm getting. And we had something similar at Stacy, we had the lights out on the, I guess you call it the side of the building as you go from Stacy to Memorial, that were out for, you know, way longer than they should have been. Um, we had our lights out here, but, yeah, we need to, I think we need to kind of define ownership of these responsibilities.
Any other questions or comments? Again, yeah, thank you for everybody for that, obviously discussions, if you need to more discussions, go ahead, John.
Um, just, you know, are we on track to get Josh's report by next week?
Which report was that?
Uh, that's the one he promised us by Thanksgiving on the, um, basically a facilities, um, detailed overview or analysis of, um.
Yeah, as far, as far as I know, I can, I can double-check with him and make sure that gets to you guys by Wednesday, of next week, earlier.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, once, go as once, very, very, but thanks again, alright. Moving on then to the report, uh, from, oops, actually, sorry, yeah, the report of our superintendent, and this is, uh, looking at the final, um, presentation of goals.
Yeah, so I don't wanna go through, I think we've gone through it a couple of times, so I'm not gonna go through it in any kind of detail. What I'd put at your seats too, is, uh, or each, each of your spots, is, uh, timelines for the long-range facilities plan and strategic plan development. And I wanna just focus on the facilities piece, because it's just something we just talked about. So, one of the things I'm doing, which is probably a little bit of a duplication of efforts with, with what Josh is doing, but I think it's gonna help when he puts his input into the, the plan, is we've, we've had, um, a long-range education facilities plan and a NASDAQ best facilities use plan, that I basically took that information from each of the buildings and, and populated into a spreadsheet. And what we're doing over the course of several months is, I went through all the areas and updated it where I knew that things were in place. And we gave, I gave it to technology, it's in Kathy and Carlos's hands right now to add like different projects. We've had a lot of classrooms, for example, since that last project was, was, or those last plans were developed, is, is one, one big example. And like the big Stacy, uh, heating, you know, HVAC project that's gonna happen this, this spring or summer, um, is another example. And then once it goes to Kathy and Carlos to add that level of detail, then it's gonna go to each of the principals and they're going to, I think, add, add those pieces, so we have kind of a, like, in one place, all the information. And I'm gonna work with, obviously, the long-range facility subcommittee too, and get their input into it. But it's, um, it's gonna put it in one place, and then based on that spreadsheet, I'll turn it into a report, which I'll, again, run, run by the long-range facilities planning committee, to kind of have that next document that we're, that's ready to go. Now, it's ambitious to get that all done by, I think, June, it may go a little longer. And I think that some of these things, you know, the, the timelines might be off and they're gonna be a little iterative. But I think this is something where we're putting all the key I's on it, and, you know, looking at it a couple of different times. And I think we'll have a product, like, one of the things we talked about, uh, the, uh, finance, was that last night or the night before? Finance committee was last night?
It was last night, yeah.
Last night, okay. Um, is, uh, is the fact that like, we're gonna have buildings that we're not gonna be able to replace. In a timeline that I think we're all gonna be comfortable with. So, you know, the conversation we just had about preventative maintenance is gonna become more and more important. And if you look at Woodland, in two years, Woodland's gonna be ten years old, which is crazy. And, you know, the other buildings, like, you know, the, the high school, we're, we're trying to get that, you know, partnership with the MSBA. Stacy will probably be behind that, followed by Memorial. And then thirty years out, when I'm eighty, we'll work on the, the Brookside project. Um, it's, so I think this document will be, this spreadsheet will be a good doc, like a baseline document to jump off of. And we'll be able to really look at, um, and I think I'm gonna ask Carlos and I'm gonna ask the principals and probably have Kathy weigh in too. In terms of like, what are some of the highest priorities based on your perspective for the building? Because I think that will generate some rich conversation around, like, what are some, you know, things when we look at, uh, capital planning? And when we look at like, you know, how are we approaching this kind of like broadly? Because we have three aging buildings, you know, the high school, Stacy and, and Memorial. You know, Woodland and Brookside are still, I think, within, you know, and all the buildings are obviously very functional. But, but we have three buildings that we have really, starting to age infrastructure, really aging infrastructure, and we've really gotta look at it. So that's kind of, that'll give you a sense of the timeline on this. And again, it's ambitious, it might take longer. But it's, um, it's gonna put a lot of eyes on this and it's going to, uh, are they locked out?
Not sure.
It's going to, um, it's gonna really kind of, I think, give us a couple documents to kind of reference that we'll be able to use over the next five to six years when we're kinda making some of these decisions.
So if I can just jump in for a second.
Please.
I think that when I look at this, this is, that, that, this is, this is what's needed, but I think a lot of these areas need a much deeper dive. When, when, when Chris and I, and I think Michael was here, we looked at the boilers that day. That electrical room is a disaster.
Yeah, yeah.
The switch here is, is, no surprise it's still operating. I think we need somebody to come in and look at that and a lot of other components. Because, you know, we could be at the point of imminent failure with any of that. That's just one example.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
And that would be one of the recommendations too.
And, and that's, that's the thing. It's, it's, it's more than just Carlos can handle. And he certainly doesn't have the expertise on all of these topics. Uh, very, very well rounded, well versed and, but I, we, we may need to look at some kind of, uh, you know, a consulting firm, almost like a, not feasibility study, but something to look much deeper into these, these, uh, components.
And we've talked about that previously too.
Yeah. I mean, it's nothing, we don't have this information. We have a higher level overview of these systems. And it's something that, again, we'll be working on as a subcommittee.
One hundred percent.
So I'm not trying to dump that to you, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and you know, if I go into an electrical room.
Yeah.
I'm just worried about sticking my finger in the plug.
You don't have to, you can stick your arm right in the side of the switch.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, God.
Stay near it, you're fucking, you're in danger.
Yeah. So, and I think strategic planning is a similar process, but obviously a, a different topic. And I included, um, just, just quickly, I don't wanna go into, I think we spent a lot of time on this. Is, um, we're gonna be incorporating information from obviously the previous strategic plan. Um, KLE, which is the equity audit, as well as, uh, meeting the moment, which is the reimagining of the high school. And we're getting a lot of good data from those two sources and we're gonna get some reports. Um, I'm hoping it lines up. Sometimes the timelines in these things shift. Um, but we're hoping to have the strategic plan done by June for, you know, your approval, or at least, you know, generally in, in a pretty good, in a pretty good place.
Okay, excellent. Any, uh, specific questions, any comments, concerns, um, regards to the goals as presented? Yes, Brendan.
Um, I guess, well, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a question for it, so, sorry.
Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Well, it's more of a, it is a question, but not necessarily directly to the goals. So, um, I guess my question is, just cause I'm still trying to learn the process, when do we submit our budget to the town? Like, when do we submit our budget to the town?
We meet with the full committee after Kevin, Craig and I from Central. And we go through all the new initiatives and the, um, level impact to our existing budget. And we visit all of those initiatives. And after those are defended, we bring them, um, in a January meeting, around January sixth. And we'll begin a full budget discussion. So we'll be complete after that meeting to invite FinCom in after January sixth.
And so to answer the next question, um, I don't see a, a, a dramatic departure for at least the next first year, year and a half of the strategic plan.
Okay.
Where we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna need a tremendous investment, um, you know, based on that. I think it's, it's all things we're working towards currently.
Okay, cause that's what I was getting at with, with the long term facilities plan. If we do, and, you know, the, the end goal is to really kinda be done, you know, in the summertime, which makes sense, cause it is a very large document to create. But if there is something like John's point of, you know, a potential electrical hazard that absolutely needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and, and the, the capital planning process is iterative, the, the budget process becomes iterative. And I think, um, you know, a lot of the things that we know are issues aren't gonna be major surprises to anybody. I think like, like John said, I think if there's, there's probably gonna be a great deal of value of having someone to come in with some expertise. To give maybe a deeper level of assessment, and that might shift some of the priorities. But I think we generally have a sense of where some of the major issues are.
Okay. Yeah, that was really just gonna.
Yeah.
Just trying to understand the process a little bit. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions on the goals?
Uh, can I just comment to Brendan?
Of course.
Just, um, just to add to the conversation. Basically, we, we kind of present our, vote on our proposed budget either late March, early April.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes mid-April, and that's, and hopefully, you know, by that time, the finance committee, um, supports it or subcommittee supports it. And then it goes to the annual town meeting in May. It's, it's been, you know, as a benchmark, it's, it's been in March some years and early April some years. And we're working on it from that first Sa- don't make any plans the first Saturday in January, by the way.
No, yeah.
And we work on it from that first Saturday till, in, in, until we're done with it. And it, like, as Kathy said, she's, they start working on it, what, first week in December?
We're, we're rolling, we're starting to roll about next week or the week after? Probably the week after, yeah.
We are, right after Thanksgiving we start.
Michael?
So are we asking questions on, on any of the goals?
Yeah, just in general, if there's, there's any, again, we're, this is the kind of the final presentation. I would like to eventually vote to accept these goals, so this is the, the final time to make any type of comments or corrections.
So, um, the last time this, this came up, it came to attendance, I asked to be some number that we're trying to shoot for. I notice there's no number.
Yeah, we're gonna go with the number that the state targets, and I don't necessarily, I don't know if they, they've come out yet.
But we'll, we'll, we'll use the state targets for, um, chronic absenteeism.
Can we add that into the evidence and outcomes?
I think I put it in there.
Uh, meeting agenda, attend, uh.
Nope. Let me see. Just gotta find the document, I'm sorry. I put my glasses back on. Shh, 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 I think there's a statement about the, the state. Which, which goal number is it?
I, I see.
Not two.
I see set targets based on a, um.
Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education Accountability.
Where?
Building system provided any with that state.
Well, that's key actions, not outcomes.
I can switch to outcomes.
Thanks.
Yep.
Events, outcomes, alright, excellent. Anything else?
So at least we can note that, I'm sorry.
So looking for a motion to accept the, uh, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, superintendent goals. With the addition of, or Mike's edit, uh, that Kevin's taking care of right now. So, for motion, motion by Brendan, second by Megan, and all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent, very good. Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Yeah.
So moving on to our MTA class size reports. MTA representatives, go on up.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Right here.
Give you a spot wherever you're comfortable. People generally don't like to sit next to Matt though.
That is normal, yes.
Welcome, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having us. I don't have my big stack of paper because, uh, we have a new fancy, uh, dashboard.
I like this much better.
It is nice.
It's much better than the paper.
I'm still getting a hang of it. Uh, but looking, uh, things looked good, uh, from, uh, our original, uh, work with it. Uh, we were really impressed with the numbers, especially at the elementary schools. There were a couple outliers, uh, that Cherry had, um, called my attention to. Cherry, did you wanna, uh, go over those?
Sure. So, um, these are correlative of class sizes and they're more caseloads. So, um, we have one problem that we've noticed at Brookside and it's the caseload of the nurse. So with the, the addition of the modular buildings, the, um, enrollment at Brookside went to five hundred and seventy-one.
Let's call that the permanent addition, Cherry.
Oh, sorry. The permanent additions to Brookside. My bad, Kevin, you're right. The permanent additions to Brookside increased the enrollment there to five hundred and seventy-one. And we have one full-time nurse taking care of five hundred and seventy-one little people. So, um.
Is there, Kevin, is there a part-time nurse who floats for the ele- elementary schools?
We do have a floating nurse, um, you know, Rebecca Padula would be better to answer the question, like, how much time she spends in any given place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, um, and we have, we have, um, Brandon, what's, what's Brandon's last name?
Uh, Brendan is, um, aligned with a student.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
So yes, but we do have a floating nurse that does go building to building. I, I couldn't tell you honestly tonight how much time she spends in any one building. I think she goes where she's kinda needed, depending on the.
But I think it's safe to say that many times Brookside is one nurse.
Correct.
That, that there may be floating.
No, that's, 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 that's very accurate. There's one, there's one full-time nurse assigned at a permanent.
Exactly. And, and Memorial's enrollment is four fifty-two and they have one nurse. And so that's a hundred and twenty more kids at Brookside, um, with one nurse handling that. And, you know, there's some obvious issues there. But, um, we also understand that this is a shift, that there were a lot of moving parts. And we might have to just take a peek at that, that number. Um, in addition, at Stacy, uh, the biggest issue right now with caseloads is the guidance counseling. So the American Association of School Counselors recommends a ratio of two hundred and fifty students to one guidance counselor. And currently our guidance counselors at Stacy, the eighth grade guidance counselor, the ratio is three hundred and forty-three to one. The seventh grade, I think, is three forty to one, and the sixth grade is three hundred and five to one.
And that's because each one is assigned to a grade level?
Yes, so each, each counselor is assigned to one grade level. So some of the issues that this creates is, the biggest issue is an inability to do tier one services for our students. And the tier one services would be, mm, pulling a small group of kids to teach study skills. Or to teach executive functioning skills, um, pulling a small group of kids to work on social skills. Instead, the guidance counselors are triaging some of the students that are struggling with the mental health issues. With, um, medical issues where they've been out of school for a period of time and they have to come back to school. Um, the guidance counselors just cannot get to those tier one supports. And it of course creates issues as the schools, as the students go further on into their career, right? So, you know, I'll give you, for example, last year, we had well over a hundred students apply to BBT. And in the past, we've always had the guidance counselors pull each student to do interview skills before their BBT interview. And so last year we had to do more group work with that. And it was, the guidance counselor had to pull in other people to help her get to all of those students. Um, and it impacts, of course, the teachers as well. Because if a, a teacher can't pull a group of kids to teach study skills, we don't have the time in our schedule to do that. So, um, the students are missing that piece. Um, and I think we would like to see the guidance counselors have a ratio of two fifty to one. As it is at the high school, the high school guidance counselors are well below, some of them are well below the two fifty to one. Like, they have a hundred and ninety-three, um, I think the highest is two forty-three at the high school.
Kevin, I think Craig sent those.
Yeah, Craig sent me those earlier today. So, um, we would like to see the guidance counselor ratio at Stacy be similar to what it is at the high school. So that all of our students can, um, enjoy a fantastic guidance counseling program at our middle school. Uh, most people recognize that middle school is one of the toughest three years of any person's given life. Um, and we would like to see that. But, um, we do acknowledge that the class sizes have been reduced. There's a couple little issues at, in some classes and some places, but for the most part, we are doing a good job.
Well, I think one of the problems at Stacy's, uh, just a lack of space. So you have some classes that are in like the high twenties in your core, uh, which you wanna avoid that, obviously. Um, but where would we put them at this point? So. Uh, and that could be where a guidance, another guidance counselor could help with balancing out those schedules, uh, you know?
One, one of our issues, as you know, is we have a pretty high churn rate of kids coming and going.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes that really impacts like.
The numbers, yeah.
It creates an imbalance as the year goes on. We see the same thing at the high school level. At elementary, the placement process is a little different.
Yeah.
But at the secondary level, like, changes during the year can cau- can and do cause imbalances.
They, it, it does. And, and we understand this. And we, we do recognize that it is definitely a space issue at Stacy. I mean, if, in a perfect world, we would have enough space to have, you know, one more core teacher, um, at each grade level. But we just don't have the space. Um, so I think the teachers are, um, doing what they can with their classes that have the high numbers. It typically evens out that each teacher has one class that's ra- rather large. Um, so I think the teachers feel like you guys are doing a good job supporting us in those numbers. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, can I just say one more thing, phrase or a quick question? So, one thing that's really helped us in the last year and a half too, and change, is we've been very stable enrollment wise. Which hasn't been the case for the last like five or six years prior to that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we could come back in the spring and have a very different conversation based on.
Right.
You know, we could have, you know, a winter like we did, like, say, three or four years ago, where we get, you know, a couple hundred kids that come through our doors. And we don't see the same number of kids walking out the door.
Right.
Um, so I just wanna just state that, although I think we're doing, I agree with you, I think we're doing a very, very good job right now in terms of class sizes and, and a very complex system.
Yeah.
Um, that could change on a moment's notice.
Yeah.
So.
And when, when does that influx usually come?
It's, it's historically, like, last year we really didn't get it.
Right.
But it's usually January through like March.
Okay.
Um, it's heating up a little bit at the FRC, um, but not to a point where I'm like, ooh, I'm really concerned about it. But it really tends to happen after the holidays, so we'll, we'll see.
And we have some built-in space, I know, at the high school, so some of those, where, do we do the same thing at Stacy or no?
To the extent we can.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
I think we have, I think we probably have more flexibility at the elementary level and a lot of grade levels. And I think Stacy's probably where we have probably the least amount of flexibility of all the buildings right now.
It ta- it tends to be. We, we do, to the extent that we can, we leave space. Like, for example, in the newcomer EL class, we try to keep that as low as possible.
Cause we know those grow over the course of the year.
We, we know it'll grow, and it, it has this year. I mean, my, my particular class, I think we've gotten seven kids since the beginning of the year. Um.
And that's consistent across the board, cause we've, we've learned that through just history.
Think we're getting two more on Monday. But we, we do recognize that it's, it's a space issue, that there's not, I mean, we have a lot of shared spaces and.
So, so we'll see. I mean, this is an ongoing conversation, but.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Um, can we, or you, I should say, can you speak with the, the nursing director and also, um, with the guys department? Just about them making cases for a nurse at, at Brookside and more people at, um.
Yeah, yeah.
At Stacy for budgeting.
And, and, and this isn't the first time this has been brought up, Stacy, that Cherry, I had this conversation previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I know that the Karina and the team over there has been brought in with our station as well.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Becky's new as the director of nursing.
Thank you.
But I know she knows the ratios and she's very on top of everything, so.
Okay, good.
Alright, thanks, Chris. So could we go to the district for the investment in the digital support? Because this is the most visually, visually appealing way that we've looked at this data in at least five plus years. This is amazing, so this is great. Is there actually an ELA class with forty-seven kids in it? Don't tell me that, in eighth grade?
No, that was my, I think Craig can speak to that, cause a lot of those high numbers at the top, uh, they're deceiving.
No. Okay.
Yeah, so.
There what? Just, no, eighth grade ELA I'm looking at.
It's how it's coded in X two.
Alright, so if it has this, right now this is pulling the, um, it's not pulling the course number. It's pulling the course name and the section number. So for example, there are eighth grade ELA classes that are, um, have different course numbers.
So two have the same section. Okay.
But they have the same.
Section.
They have the same section number and the same number.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a class in the rest, so it's forty-seven.
So basically.
And there's not sixty-nine kids in, there's, there's not sixty-nine kids in a health class either.
It's basically a combined class. It's basically a combined class.
And performing acts, I would expect to see large, so I wasn't concerned about that.
Well, so these are all, like, when you click on this, I'm not gonna do it because it'll pull up the kids' names. But when you click on it, um, it's pulling the sixth grade, the seventh grade, and the eighth grade because they all have the same section number.
Got it. I was specifically in eighth grade, Craig, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't.
Where, where did you see the eighth grade ELA?
So, I just sort of like grade level eight.
But that's the case. It's, it's your two fifty-four and your, your one twenty and one ten class. That has the same course, uh, section number, but it, but a different course number.
Yeah, I see right there.
Oh, there it is, yeah, the bottom.
It's impressive you can see that from here, Chris.
I just wanted to make sure, cause that would be something I'd wanna address, that's all.
That's, that's the story with that, though.
Okay, that's really helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, poor Ryan McHale, forty-seven kids.
I don't think we have a classroom big enough to store forty-seven kids.
No. But that, that's like.
Can you do year over year? Like, I'm, I'm looking mostly at total enrollment versus the sections, is that an option in here somewhere, Craig? We can talk about it later.
Uh, say, you wanna look at last year's section, you mean?
Even just, is there a way for us to visualize year over year enrollment at schools and grades, et cetera? You don't need to do it right now, I was just curious.
My, my one nervousness about playing around with this is like me.
You don't, you can do it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, just more informational.
Um, I don't know that I can do that right now. I think, I, what I would need, I think, is over here, uh,
A year.
Just to pull the years, cause I can do it with MCAS.
Alright, thanks.
Um, I don't know how complicated it is on Open Architects end.
I think when we think about it for budgeting purposes, that's what's really valuable, so it's helpful for us to, thanks.
Yep.
Cool.
I was on, same, Megan, so one of the ways that we reduce, we've always had a concern with the, um, the specials at Stacy. Those usually have very large class sizes and this year, we introduced another special that took some of those kids out so that, um, those class sizes got reduced. And the, the new special is a Math Connections, I believe is what it's called. And it's all about how to budget and all of those things, pay insurance and how insurance works and, um, so it's a really fantastic addition to our curriculum and it helps with the class sizes.
That's great.
So, um, you will, you would see like a reduction with the specials, the class sizes there.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Well, any other questions regarding class size concerns? Yes, Rob?
Just to speak to the two points that were brought up about the nurse and the guidance counselor. So, I know when we put in the new permanent classrooms at Brookside, a Milestones room was one of those rooms. Are there now two Milestones classrooms at Brookside? So, that's just something to consider too, is thinking about not just the enrollment of the students at Brookside, but the potential needs of the students at Brookside too. So, I, I just think that's something to keep in mind. And, um, I know a Milestones classroom is very different than a medically fragile classroom, but the district has had rooms in the past before where there are nurses that are specifically assigned to certain groups of students. So, that, that's something maybe just when we're thinking about budgeting to kind of have this piece of the puzzle. And then, thinking about the caseloads at Stacy, um, and again, just trying to proactively think about the budget. I would, if you, and I don't know where this came from and I don't want you to, like, divulge where this came from, but in having the discussions with maybe the guidance counselors or whoever brought this forward at Stacy, I would encourage you to think about kind of the school-based mental health services at Stacy as a whole because you quoted one ratio.
Yes.
I am not gonna right now say my thought about the other ratios at Stacy, but I think it's worth us looking at, um, everyone who's considered a mental health personnel at that building and thinking about how is a team, what does it look like and really what type of recommendations should we make? Because I'm not saying I disagree with the guidance counselor, but, um, I do think it's worth looking at that whole department and thinking what, what is the ask before you come forward or Cary Dad comes forward at Budget System, so.
Right. And we, we have had those conversations. So, one of the things that, that we talked a lot about, um, was, yes, you have these other mental health professionals and they have a caseload like of however many students they see per week, right?
Specifically, uh, adjustment counselors are more in addition to that?
It, both, adjustment counselors and school psychologists, like, they might have their caseloads. Those students on that caseload are still on the guidance counselor caseload, right? So, it doesn't, it doesn't take those students away. They still end up with a, with a caseload of three hundred and forty kids. They just have some supports that are helping them. But what happens is, like, if the adjustment counselor is meeting with a student and another student goes into crisis, the guidance counselor steps up and, and handles that crisis. But that takes the guidance counselor away from their assigned duty or whatever they're working on at that moment because you have to help the student who's in crisis. So, um, it becomes more and more difficult, like we said, to, to plan those tier-one supports. And I agree with you, we do have to weigh what's, you know, what's gonna be the best use of, of the budget there. I do know that, um, that guidance counselors have been asking for another guidance counselor for a number of years. I think since at least Nancy Angelini was principal there, so, um, and we know that in those intervening years that our, our, the needs of our students have grown. Whether the actual enrollment there has sort of stayed the same or grown a little bit and then decreased and grown a little bit, the needs of those students that are there have grown. So, yeah.
Other questions in regards to class size, seeing any? So, so thank you for bringing that in. Thank you for bringing those, those two items to our attention too. Certainly, we can, uh, discuss those during our budget season.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks for having us.
Excellent. Thank you guys, thank you for taking time.
Thank you both.
Bye, everybody.
Come more often.
Yeah, I don't know how you guys stay up this late.
Nick, I'll, I'll tell you, actually, we can do this now.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Alright. So, moving on from, to our, uh, report from our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Barry.
Um, yes, I have for the committee's approval this evening, ten warrants in the amount of one million, three hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Looking for a motion to approve the warrant. Motion by Matt, second. Megan, all in favor. And that is unanimous.
I have a, um, personnel update from our previous meeting, no vote is required. We do have a budget update and we do have a list of, um, grants for acceptance this evening.
Right. And then, just before we move on, any questions in regards to, uh, budgets or anything like that?
Please, go first.
Go ahead.
Uh, it was actually just on the personnel list, Kathy, could you just clarify, what is a supplemental math teacher?
That would be a Craig question.
Sorry, Craig.
Oh, one page are we on?
I'm just looking at the personnel update on page fifty-two where it lists there's four individuals.
Oh, I know what this is. This is, uh, we were unable to, um,
Oh, yeah, we had a, we, we had a resignation.
They're taking on a section?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're each picking up one, okay.
And they're covering sections, yeah, yeah.
I've drawn sections, so they're getting a stipend for that, he's where they're not.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to follow that, okay, thank you.
Correct.
Appreciate that. Okay, got it, thank you. Okay. Sorry, thanks.
Matt, you got a question?
Budget, budget update.
Yes.
I wanna bring attention to thirty-three hundred for transportation again for similar reasons to last spring. So, just for, um, a refresher for everybody, last spring, we ended seven hundred and sixty-six thousand over on transportation. Um, the number right now, the projected over is just two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is sixty-eight thousand dollars higher than we were at last year at this time. Just last month, we were projected at, at being over one hundred and thirteen thousand. So, my concern is this is trending to go the exact same way it went last year. We had the money, I know, last year in the budget to cover it without having asked for more. But knowing that we're gonna have to have four hundred thousand dollars ready to cover the needs that are coming in, I hope that this pattern follows some of the patterns that I saw back to twenty nineteen where at this time, it was, for example, two hundred and twenty-one thousand projected over, but we ended twenty-two thousand over, so it wasn't a big deal. It actually went in a positive direction. But given the last two years, I'm very concerned that this specific item is gonna continue to carry in the same direction it did last year. Um, and I'm not sure what we can do to get a deeper dive into what's going on here and this.
I did, actually.
Okay.
Um, so, part of the process, if you'll remember, we brought in, um, our previous transpati- transportation director, Lenny Morcone. And what's interesting about this is the patent is going to hold if, um, our trend with the, um, local students, which I think you brought up last time, Meg, you were right on the money with that. So, essentially, when Lenny reviewed our transportation and our routes, he felt as though that l- um, local transportation number was double what it had been while he was here, um, in district. So, that's essentially when a student is assessed and a team chair feels as though they should be riding on a bus other than our yellow bus, they put with him or her on a local van route. So, where we used to use our vans, you know, way back when Lenny and I brought them, um, on, we were using those for our expensive out-of-district routes. So, if we had a three hundred and fifty dollar per day student cost, we could expedite all of those vans and have them doing all of the out-of-district routes. That can't happen because now all of those vans are transporting local Milford students. So, they're just doing, you know, like a slingshot, coming in, picking up kids, going back out, picking up kids. So, that is where the problem lies.
So, we're outsourcing the out-of-town stuff because our previous out-of-town people, which I've seen, they, they go, so, is this a situation where we need to discuss bringing in more vans or given the fact that we can't even get Jim out of the driver's seat, is it not worth trying to bring vans if we can't find drivers for it?
Well, it's my hope to have this discussion during December with our Special Ed Director and get her sense of the numbers that are being assigned in the, uh, transportation need. Uh, if it's going to stay and she feels as though these students require this, then yes, you're gonna have to address bringing on additional vans to reduce that, uh, extreme cost. And it is, it's extremely expensive. One route could be four hundred dollars a day going into Braintree for a out-of-district place.
So, it's likely we could have to absorb this again until we can start making corrective, uh, decisions.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, hopefully, there's a way that we could, you know, discuss this with Lucy and see what we could do about it.
Any other questions, um, in regards to budgetary stuff? Alright, so, we'll go over the grant side of it. Um, I have, uh, I'm just gonna do it one shot here based on the late hour. Uh, we have eight grants here, um, for November of twenty twenty-three and the total amount is for two million, six hundred sixty-seven, two million, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, so looking for a motion to approve that quantity of grants for November of twenty twenty-three. Motion.
Can you just list out what they are just for quick?
Yes, I can. Thanks. They are in your pack.
Oh, that's why I looked at.
Page fifty-six, my.
Yeah, so the Mas grad Promising Practices, the HQIM Continuation, that's right. Social Emotional Learning, MV Homeless, Open, uh, SIAID, uh, SOA Evidence-Based. And this one is the ninety-four dash one forty-two IDA. And then also Improving Ventilation and Air Quality. So, again, we have eight of those. They're all grants and.
And can I also point out just quickly that you mentioned eight and six of the eight were competitive grants. So, that means we, it wasn't a continuation, it was that Nancy wrote a grant and we, um, were recipients. So, big kudos to Nancy, she's done fabulous work.
Yeah, she's been awesome.
Could I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
Kathy, did you say one of the grants was related to the supplemental math instruction that we saw in the personnel report?
No, that wasn't, no.
Okay, it was not, okay.
All motion.
Excellent. Motion by Brendan, second by Megan, and then all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent.
Chris, can I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
What are we using the ventilation money for, Kathy, if you're following?
That will be our new boilers at Stacy.
I did, that, so kind of, okay, just wanted to align those two, thanks.
Yeah. Alright. So, uh, Subcommittee Updates. Subcommittees that have met, I know we, we just met with, uh, policy. There was a community use policy that we've, hopefully have finalized and we'll bring to our first read, um, at the next meeting. Uh, then we also just kind of reviewed where our next steps and what we're looking to focus on as far as from a policy-wise standpoint. So, if there is anything that other committee members would like to see us focus on, um, please let me, myself know and try to get it on that agenda. Any other Subcommittee's, seeing any? So, alright then. Uh, future agenda items?
Yeah, I do, so. So, we got, um, you know, um, news that's bittersweet this week, as, as you all know, that our Superinten- Assistant Superintendent for Business is going to be retiring.
No.
And so, we'll, I'm sure we'll address that, um, you know, personally at, at a future meeting. But, uh, I'd like to see an agenda item for the process of replacing the school business administrator at an upcoming meeting.
You wanna add technology into that too?
Yes.
Yes, please.
And just put it together?
Yeah, sure. Alright. Can we reject your letter?
I already asked.
I told Matt I have, you know, enough days to be out sick for two years.
That's an excellent response.
So, you can work them home.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Alright. Any other future agenda items? Uh, seeing any? So, we will move on to adjournments, actually. So, at this time, we will be ending the open session of our meeting and entering executive session where we will discuss an MTA grievance. Um, we will not be returning to open session. This requires a roll call vote. Look over to Matt.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Yes.
And I am also, yes, so, good night, everyone.